Ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. It is now ten oh one and the Brazos County Commissioners Court will convene into regular session on this November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, Commissioner Conner will lead us in invocation and the pledges of allegiance to our flags.
Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Jesus, thank you for the gift of this day. Every day is such a gift, and we're reminded by that on days like today when we think of twenty-six years ago. How eleven students and one former student were killed at the Aggie bonfire collapse. Jesus, hold their souls close to you today and every day. Comfort their family, give them peace, and let them feel the love of all those Aggies and non-Aggies who support them through the grief that they have encountered. Help us also, Lord, that such tragedies might be averted in the future. Thank you for the people of Brazos County for such a great place to live. I'm reminded of that each day as I go around and especially when I travel. Just a great place to live in Brazos County. Thank you for all of us up here being able to serve the county. Help us in our decisions to do the right things for the county and for your approval, for your joy. Thank you for those that stand in the breach, our military men and women, our police and fire, all those who protect us and make our lives so easy to go through day by day. Thank you for them and their vocations and their answering the call to serve in that way. Jesus, thank you for coming to save us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Well, good morning. Welcome to Brazos County Commissioners Court. We will move to agenda item number two, call for citizen input and concern. Today, we have one citizen signed up. This time, the court calls Adam Purdue. Mr. Purdue, please state your name and the precinct you reside in. Thank you for being here as always.
My name is Adam Purdue, precinct two. So, I T S, meaning John Polster, was able to convince the local Tech Dot districts in association with the Texas Transportation Commission to use some of their discretionary funding. Dan Raj, Brazos County MPO. He, meaning John Polster, seems well-connected with Tech Dot officials and can push things in a way that we can't as a local district. Doug Marino, Tech Dot Bryan District. Both of these are direct intermittent quotes from the RMA meeting after John Polster was hired by the county. Both of these make it sound like the reason someone would want to hire John Polster is because and only because he is lobbyist and able to successfully lobby Tech Dot to spend money here in our county. John Polster, on the other hand, is very insistent that he is not a lobbyist, for some reason that I don't know the law well enough to assert. But what I can tell you from my interactions with him over the East Loop is that he is a bully and either a liar or incompetent. He either didn't actually know what was going on at the MPO in Brazos County, or he had absolutely no problem lying about it. And either way, skipped straight to berating anybody, trying to keep the facts straight. The current claim is that he alone knows NEPA, and that is why he is necessary. Yet Tech Dot won the East Loop team via email that they were not following the NEPA process. So what does he do? In North Texas, he is on an MPO board, works for the counties, and he has worked for the land speculators. He plays every side and presumably takes a cut at each step. His claim is that he does something to get Tech Dot to spend in his counties. Now that he has multiple contracts, which of his county projects, which of his county's projects does he not lobby for when Tech Dot never has any extra cash to spend? Tech Dot has its own metrics for what work needs to be done, part of which is to take input from the local MPO on the priority of projects. Here in Brazos County, there is exactly one county represented in the MPO, and this is who sets the priorities within the MPO territory already. In North Texas, there are twelve counties in the MPO. His clients are the fastest-growing counties in the state on the edge of DFW's suburban fringe. This allows him to be on the MPO setting policy and work for counties to make sure that the policy he's setting on the MPO of that whole region does what the counties want. And then he works for the land speculators, who just happen to be in front of the routes his policy and county design sets, while helping them get a higher valuation for land from the eminent domain adjustment boards that his wife sits on. While the actual growth in DFW's suburban counties actually demands Tech Dot try and keep up. To be clear, without John Polster, these DFW highways would be built. Following the same NEPA process he claims to be necessary because the DFW suburban growth clearly necessitates them. It is not actually clear that he has done anything legitimate to speed highway construction, even up in DFW. Instead, merely inserting himself in the process and taking a cut. Again, here, there is one county represented by one MPO with relatively slow growth compared to DFW that doesn't clearly demand one hundred million dollars' worth of design contracts, so nothing has been working out as well for him. Here, he couldn't follow the NEPA on the East Loop. Here, he couldn't keep his facts straight on the East Loop. Here, Bush and Wellborn, which were so clearly the most important project in the county, that the Trip Bond supporters were using it as the primary advertisement. Here, Bush-Wellborn has been pulled forward despite Polster and Trip not working on it, while Leonard Road has been delayed despite Polster and Trip working on it. Here, even if it worked out as advertised, there is no financial or economic sense to spend a hundred million dollars on the design projects today that Tech Dot will not have cause to fund nor funds to fund until decades from now. So I ask that we begin to work on discontinuing the relationship between Brazos County and John Polster. Thank you.
Mr. Purdue, thank you so much. At this time, we'll move to agenda item number three, presentations and other discussions. Today, we have a presentation and discussion on the site logistics plan for Brazos County Administration Building remodel project called Trevor Lansdale, head of project management. Trevor, thank you.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. It's exciting times, the administration building. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. As we get closer to construction starting in a very real way, I wanted to brief the court and the public, as well as the county leadership, on what we're going to be facing from a parking situation, getting into the site, getting into the building, and then getting back off the site as we progress through the project. So Flint Co. Construction is the contractor on the project, and their notice of proceed was yesterday. So they're getting ramped up. We've been doing a lot of pre-construction coordination, and they're getting ready to roll. And so the first thing that everyone's going to see on the site is a big construction fence that's going to go up. As you can see on the screen and on the handout, that's going to be the green line. And so what everybody's going to notice first is that we're going to lose a decent chunk of the parking lot over here outside the IT building and the administration building. Starting off, the fence is going to go up, but these two yellow gates are going to stay open, and so people will be able to traverse those until we get completely closed off.
Traverse meaning walk or drive?
Both, both, on foot and in their vehicles. We have a plan to take the gates down off of the currently what's the secure lot for the employees, and that will become both a public and employee lot during construction. We lose the accessibility spots over here in the front of the building, but we're going to stripe new ones over in the current secure lot for folks who need it to get into the building while construction is happening. We're going to lose the front entrance to the building as part of the initial phase of the project, too, what is currently the public entrance. But there's going to be a new temporary sidewalk that gets poured along this plane here with a new door to get people into the building. And so we're going to kill it with signage and everything else to make sure that everybody knows where they're going. And then we're going to put some messages out on our socials, too, to keep everybody informed. Starting Monday, the request is going to be for employees who are working normal hours to begin parking in the parking garage as much as we can. For folks that are working early mornings or late evenings, you know, safety is obviously a concern. So if those folks need to park in the parking lot, that's fine. Again, for folks working eight fives, we'd ask that you park in the garage starting on the second floor.
Trevor, will there be designated spots or designated floor or first come, first served?
It's first come, first served for both situations, both in the lot and then in the garage as well.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything else. That's pretty well it. I did bring our folks from Flint Co. here to introduce them to the court so that you can put names to faces because they're going to be around a whole lot. I don't know if they want to come forward. There we go. So Mark Holland is our project manager with Flint Co. Construction. And then Tanner Stefka and Frank Reina are our two site superintendents with Flint Co. So they'll be around quite a bit, running subs as we go through and leading the charge on the remodel. So it's going to be exciting.
We know who Frank is.
Yes, sir.
Mark, good to meet you. Frank, thank you. And. Nice ring.
Good luck, guys.
We look forward to spending way too much time with you.
Absolutely. Communication will be huge on this. We meet weekly, and we'll be blasting out updates as we go through as different parts get open and closed as we go through the project. But just again, wanted to get it in front and again, asking everybody to begin parking in the garage on Monday. If you can't park in the garage, you didn't sign up. Monday, the twenty-fourth, yes, sir. And when we get back from Thanksgiving, it's going to get hot and heavy real quick. We will be sending out a link to register for the garage if you didn't get picked up in the initial phase when we took over. And then all of the site logistics plans will go out as part of that as well.
This is just the initial stage.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for the team from Flint Co. or Trevor?
I just want to say thank them, thank them, because I remember when y'all had the meeting over at Brazos Center, and you guys came out and took input from the users of the different facilities and things. I just want to thank y'all for coming back, and I recognize faces, don't remember names, but thank you guys again for coming and saying hello.
All right. Thank you.
That conclude the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Conner? Trevor, thank you. Team Flint Co., thank you very much. Look forward to working with you all.
Yes, sir.
Moving to agenda item number four, resolution twenty-five dash zero one four of the Commissioners Court of Brazos County, Texas, approving the bonds to be issued by Tarrant County Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation for the purpose of financing and refinancing certain health facilities located within the boundaries of Brazos County. Texas for the benefit of Baylor Scott and White Health as required by section one four seven of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
No.
There being none. We have a fine gentleman up here.
Well, I came if there were questions, but.
And you state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Matt McCabe. I'm a partner with the law firm Norton Rose Fulbright, and I represent Baylor Scott and White Health, who, as you know, have facilities here in Brazos County and College Station.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions? There being none. Thank you for taking the time to come up here.
You bet.
Much appreciated. So agenda item number four, we have a motion, a second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number five, approval of resolution twenty-five dash zero one five to apply for the fiscal year twenty-six bullet-resistant components for law enforcement grant from the Office of the Governor.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? This was a Brazos Valley-driven initiative to the legislature that has been in the works for multiple sessions, and glad that the legislature provided us this opportunity. So agenda item number five, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number six, approval requested from Constable Precinct Two for acceptance of a eight hundred fifty-four dollar and forty-nine cent check donation from Bearcat Oilfield Services LLC to be used for the purchase of a bumper push bar.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
And it's eight hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. You said twenty-nine.
Eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
You'll take. I have new eyes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussions on this bumper push bar? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number seven, approval requested to provide the Brazos Center and setup costs in the amount of two thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars as complimentary for the Veterans Claims Clinic on November first, two thousand and twenty-five by the Brazos County Veteran Service Office.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number eight, consider and adopt an order authorizing the budget officer to process budget amendments within departmental budgets during August and September without Commissioners Court approval, with contingency fund amendments still requiring court approval and requiring all amendments to be reported on the next posted agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Judge, hopefully this isn't for last August and September. This is for next year's August and September. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
We have any further discussion?
No.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Payne, did you want to speak? She has made the effort to walk up, so we'd love to hear from you. Our budget officer, Nina Payne.
She's just trying to get her steps in.
I know. Good morning, Nina Payne, budget officer. It's moving forward, so every single year during that time period, it will allow me to post those budget amendments just for those two months.
The only reason I asked that question, in the last few sessions, we've had issues that came up that we voted on after the fact. So I just wanted to make sure it was for next year and not for last year.
Yes, sir, because we're still on what we consider P thirteen for FY twenty-five, and so that will alleviate some of this that are needing to be posted, especially in October. So it will help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Payne, thank you so much. Commissioners, thank you. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number nine, approval requested from the District Clerk's Office for the jury selection plan for Brazos County in compliance with all portions of chapter sixty-two of the government code, government code.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number ten, approval of the following job description.
Move for approval, a.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. We do have citizen input. At this time, the court calls Jody Quimby. Mr. Quimby, good morning. Thank you for being here. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I'm Jody Quimby, forty-six eighty-six River Garden Court in precinct two.
Another cool kid.
I don't know if y'all are aware, but this is really a hot mic that's echoing in the room real bad.
Sometimes we prefer to be on that side.
Oh, is that right? Okay. This is a job description for a project manager and wanted to make some comments and have a couple of questions also on that. I'm here to talk about this because I have a lot of experience in this field, over forty years of dealing with commercial construction as a project manager estimator and an owner's representative on significant projects. So overall. So overall, the description's done real well, you know, I think it is. There is a question here. How many project managers does the county have right now?
One.
Okay, and that is?
Trevor Lansdowne, who you saw in the presentation.
Sure. I'm familiar with Trevor. Is he the director of the department? What you would call the department?
He would be the department head, correct?
Okay, great.
Under our current system.
So just so everybody knows, you know, project management is not something that is just a, you know, pass the paper on type of job. It's a tough job done well. And so to have good candidates to look at and good decisions on who you choose is super important for the county. So there's, there's a few things in the description that I want to comment on. Of course, the duties and general summary, all that's done real well. You get down to the experience required for the job. That portion is what I want to speak to here. Like I said a moment ago, this type of job with the size of projects you've got coming on is going to be a tough job if it's done right. And so you say in the experience required, a minimum of three years of progressive experience in construction, project management, field supervision, or related roles such as a general contractor, project manager, superintendent, or owner's representative. I want to strenuously suggest that you change some things in that statement. I suggest that you make the minimum requirement for experience way over three years because.
Suggestion six, eight, nine?
I would, if it was my decision, I'd make it at least 10. Because three years in a commercial job, that means that person's done one job, two jobs, or maybe three jobs. That person's done three jobs, he's done very small projects. That person's done two jobs, not nearly as large as what you're talking about. Maybe one job? That's not enough road time to deal with the conflict they're going to have to deal with, okay? So experience of years is super important for this position. Next, I, not to demean any responsibility on a job, on a project, but the skill set necessary for a project manager to do their job right and the skill set for a superintendent and field supervisor is worlds apart, okay? Field superintendent, he's got to know what all those trades are doing. He can't be hoodwinked over anything if he's going to do his job right. The project manager, he can't get in the weeds with all of that because he's got too many people to deal with and too many issues that are coming down the road to help that superintendent get his job done. So I would suggest that you delete field supervision and delete superintendent from that list. Like I say, not to demean any, any experience for anybody contributes because you've got to have all those people to get a job done. And again, all of these, all these people working together is to ensure that the county gets what they're paying for. So that's what I want to offer for you and strongly suggest that you make those adjustments there because I think that's in the best interest of Brazos County, okay? Any questions for me?
Commissioners? Mr. Quimby, thank you so much. Commissioners, any discussion on agenda item number 10? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 11. Approval requested for the purchase of a Toyota Tacoma for project management department. Purchase is proposed as a pilot project for the valuation of the maintenance and lifecycle costs compared to our existing fleet.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
I think that's why Trevor was wearing a jacket today because he's getting his new, he's getting his new truck today. Congratulations, Trevor.
My oldest brother, the bishop, is on his sixth Tacoma. He gets about 300,000 trouble-free miles out of him and goes to a, the fifth one was told of an accident. It saved his life with all the airbags that went off. He thought he was actually in heaven because he woke up and there's white all around him. But not yet.
Bishop with us still.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Saint Tacoma. No, but anyway, it'll be interesting to see how this works out, you know, going with a vehicle that we haven't gone with, seeing how, what the maintenance looks like on that. I think it's good for us to be looking at different things and ways to save money, and this is going to be an interesting experiment. Of course, I'm sure Trevor will be driving it very gingerly. Put a coat hanger in it, Fred. We'll put a jacket hanger in the back of the Tacoma for Trevor.
Yeah. The place where his hard hat. Commissioners, any further discussion on agenda item number 11? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 12. Request approval to wire transfer up to $11,467,409 to the Health and Human Services Commission for comprehensive hospital increase reimbursement program for the second half of year five, state fiscal year 2026, for the participating hospitals using funding from the Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Just, Judge.
Commissioner Brown.
Just that is a pass through.
Correct. That is very well clarified. Thank you for that. Any further discussion?
That's what I was going to say, and I must say it every time, just so everybody understands at home that that's not money coming out of the county coffers.
Thank you for backing me up. Chuckles.
You bet, Freddie.
Love when we're all on the same page. There is a motion, a second on agenda item number 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 13. Request authorization to wire transfer up to $1 million to HHSC for the uncompensated care demonstration year 10 redistribution payment for the benefit of participating hospitals using funding from the Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Go ahead, Fred.
That is a pass through again.
I'd like to echo that Fred said it's a pass through, everybody understand that.
Commissioners, thank you so much for the robust discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 14. Approval requested from the Road and Bridge Department to issue a U.S. bank credit card to Chantel Collins with a credit limit of $1,500 for conferences, training, and other department-related expenses.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to add, this is one of the new credit cards. It is a MasterCard.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 15. Approval of administrative services and stop-loss agreements with the Texas Association, excuse me, the Texas Association of Counties for 2026.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 16. Approval of amended community support contract with the Brazos Valley Food Bank to include the one-time additional $25,000 funding approved by the Commissioners Court during the special call session on November 6, 2025.
Move approval.
We have a fight. We have a motion by Commissioner Watson, a second by Commissioner Condola. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda number, item number 17. Approval of the following juvenile contracts for short-term detention.
Move for approval, A through K.
Second.
Is that A through I?
I'm sorry. I read that wrong. A through I.
Just want to make sure Aubrey is happy.
Alphabet.
So we have a motion to approval of A through I. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioners, any discussion on the juvenile contracts? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 18. Approval for the following juvenile amendment, number one or number two, due to price increases.
Move for approval, A through K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 19. Approval of amendment number two to contract number 22 dash 144R, previously known as number 20 dash 094, with innovative transportation services for transportation planning services to renew for another term and amend pricing.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
I know there's going to be some discussion before I, we open it up to the commission, and we do have citizen input, and I believe there are five citizens. I want to say that this contract was negotiated. It has a stop date of, I believe, January 27th. There are three projects left on this. The first one will end in January of 2026. And if you'll bear with me one second, I apologize. The first one will end in January 2026, which we will adjust the contract again if approved. The second project will end in November of 2026, which the contract will be adjusted once again. And the final contract will be completed in January of 2027, when the ITS contract will then close if approved today. Now, discussion by the court. Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I've hated this contract ever since, ever since the first time I saw it. You and I both spent a long time in the legislature. I spent five of my seven terms on appropriations dealing with Techstart, and I know Techstart does what Techstart wants to do. We've seen that on 1179. We've seen it on, on the bypass. We see it in everything that they do. And I'm not, I'm not saying bad things about Techstart. I'm just saying that I don't think Polster has any significant value to make Techstart do things. He came in and gave me a private talk, and I'll guarantee you, he could talk the horns off a billy goat. But he did not give me a good reason in his entire presentation why he thinks he can get done, get things done for Brazos County. I was going to make a motion to not renew the contract, but Chuck came out ahead, so. That's where I stand on this. I think it's a total waste of money. I think it's a total waste of time.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioners, Commissioner Condola?
Talking to county engineer and those that work with Polster, Trevor. It's not, it's not Polster. It's ITS. It's a group of engineers and planners. I have had questions about the contract too. What we look at today is a way to give some decreasing amounts of commitment of dollars as the scope of the projects go down and complete and end. We've got a date. We have projects identified. We have end dates for those projects identified and ultimately an ending time for ITS based on the input of what our staff and Road and Bridge and purchasing have told me, project management, excuse me, have told me. I'm not comfortable with changing horses in the middle of the race. We do have a lot of projects to do. I want to see them done. It's not about one person. It's about an organization that if we were to employ the people that work for ITS, I can't imagine how many millions of dollars that would be a year. It'd be a lot more than this contract. That's why you use a consultant. So personalities, I think, have tripped us up a bit here, and I share some concerns about some personalities. But I want the engineering and planning team for ITS to complete the work we've asked them to do and come to a finality of January 27th, January 27. We should come to the conclusion of that relationship. And so I, again, don't want to change in the middle of what we have going on, these three projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Condola. Commissioner Watson?
Well, I think Commissioner Condola said it very eloquently, and I agree with him. I don't see why we need to change. We hired, you know, it's sort of like, what is your time worth? And why do you hire professionals? And therefore, we've hired them to do a job. We have some jobs still pending. Therefore, I agree with him. I think it would be, it wouldn't be prudent for us to change in the middle of the stream and that we should continue with them.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson. At this time, I'd like to call Head of Road and Bridge, Prathana Banerji, to give us her assessment of working with this engineering group.
Good morning. Prathana Banerji, county engineer. I want to briefly summarize the performance of Innovative Transportation Solutions as the TRIP 22 Program Management Consultant. ITS has consistently delivered the technical coordination needed to keep the current projects, which is State Highway 47/21 interchange, the State Highway 30, which is Harvey Road, and FM 1688 Leonard Road projects progressing. They manage the environmental and schematic processes, maintain schedules and budgets, coordinate with Techstart and design engineers, and provide monthly updates directly to the court. The work they perform requires Techstart's specific experience and familiarity with federal and state design and environmental procedures. These are not processes the county performs for our locally funded projects, and they are beyond the scope and the structure of the Road and Bridge Department. In my experience working with them, ITS has been responsive, technically knowledgeable, and reliable in keeping these projects aligned with Techstart's requirements. My role is to ensure the technical success of these projects, regardless of which consultant, the consultant the court selects. Program management remains a necessary function, and for ITS, they have fulfilled that role effectively for Brazos County. And I can, you know, if you have any questions, really, I would be happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Banerji?
Nope. She said it exactly right.
Fred.
I can argue that point with you till the cows come home, but I'm not going to. I just, I just think they're a total waste of money. Really do. Techstart's going to do what Techstart wants to do. They prove that time and again, all over the state, so.
Commissioner, anything?
The, I mean, the emails that I have, probably the most talked about topic in my inbox is the work performed with ITS and the county and the updates that we're getting. I just, I can't, I can't agree that they're a total waste of money.
No.
I'd like to see the work performed, the bond items, the bond projects they're working on completed. And we do have a date that we would be done with ITS and move on with whatever else we've got to do with the TRIP bond at that point. But again, just like to see it move forward. I don't think that that expertise that they bring is a total waste of money.
And just to clarify, the steps that we are taking today is a schematic and environmental clearance of these projects. They have to then progress into PSNE and, you know, taken into design further. But these steps are the steps that Techstart would have to take to work on these projects. So we are not wasting time or wasting money or any of that. We are advancing these projects to a particular stage, and then, you know, we don't probably have the money for it later. But we are advancing them in, you know, so that they can, you know, be considered to be taken up by Techstart at a future date, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions for Ms. Banerji? Thank you, Prathana. We will move into citizens' comment. First up, Mr. Adam Perdue. Mr. Perdue, thank you for being here again. Please state your name and precinct you reside in.
Adam Perdue, Precinct Two. So I wrote two speeches today, and it seemed to go well for the first one, but now you've thrown me off a little bit. So I mean, to clarify, right, from the engineer's point, right, that these projects are being advanced and they are going to be ready for Techstart construction. However, many, 1 million, 2 million, whatever's left over in this design contract that remains to be spent is still wasted money if Techstart doesn't decide to actually build them for another 70 years. But for the actual speech, go back here. I mostly agree with Mr. Commissioner Brown, but I don't necessarily disagree with Commissioner Condola or Commissioner Watson here. Each and every single one of you have been nothing but professional and friendly people during all this whole process. And then, but unfortunately, right, what we've learned in this process is that the faith that we have in a process and the, you know, everything ending well as long as you have a bunch of good faith people trying to get to the same point can be broken. My wife is never going to vote for another bond ever again, right? I still went ahead and voted for the Brian ISD bonds. But, and that is the basic problem here, right? Because of what happened, the lack of the actual process, the lack of following the process, this bringing in everything out from the outside to break the process, right? Like, we have a process of what Techstart decides what to spend on, and that's what we've decided as a state to do, right? And so we basically, inasmuch as, sorry, ITS is doing anything, right? It's just subverting the process that we've. It's just subverting the process that we've all agreed on as a state, right? But there's this hunk cost here. And most people will wanna go ahead and finish those projects. They're gonna be sitting on a, on a shelf. And so until such point in time as Techstart decides that they do want to expand Leonard Road or, or the Forty-seven Interchange or whatever else they're working, we're, we have as part of our trip project. But the problem with, with the, with this breaking of the faith that, that so many people have had with what has happened with the East Loop, it makes me want, if any one of you four said personally outside of this, on the corner of the road, said, came up and shook my head and said, "I promise to you that this will happen, and this is the way it's gonna go down," I wouldn't have any problem believing you, right? But we're having an election coming up. And right now, the contract does not say what you've said, right? It does not represent, it is not, there is not a period of time to renegotiate except for every July, right? There is not a renegotiation in that current contract right now that says in January of twenty-six, it drops a little bit. In May of twenty-six, it drops a little bit, and then it's done in January of twenty-seven. And so I will never come up here, speak on this issue again if you rewrite the contract to actually represent what you said and we can have faith and start rebuilding the, the trust in the system. And unfortunately, right now, that needs to be a little bit of legalistic, uh, black and white.
Duly noted and heard loud and clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perdue. Now the court calls Stephen Pierceall. Mr. Pierceall, welcome and thank you. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Hey, good morning, Judge Commissioners. Stephen Pierceall, precinct two. Appreciate the conversation and the clarifications. I just wanna echo what Mr. Perdue just said, though, that, uh, that's not what it says in the amendment, that we're gonna renegotiate in January. In fact, the only opportunity for renegotiation is at the time of renewal, which would be next July. I, I find it hard to believe that, uh, the county would use the form of contract that I T S has, that they provided, which allows the contract to continue renewing indefinitely barring any action from the court. And so presumably today, whether you vote to renew it or whether, whether you don't, the contract continues indefinitely, month to month, until the court takes decisive action to terminate the contract. And that's not addressed in this amendment. And I spoke about that a few weeks ago after the contract workshop, that, uh, it should be very clear what happens when a contract expires. So I think that's another thing that we need to think about. These prolonged contracts that are more than five years long are, uh, that they, they give off the sense of a lack of transparency and they're anti-competitive to others in the, in the field. I don't know, your comments threw me off a little bit this morning, so I'm adjusting as I go here. But, um, I'd also like to point, so I've seen, I, I guess I'd like to have known what I T S was doing to see their value that they brought. But we haven't seen many of those, uh, those monthly reports. They're not published or, uh, out on the web so that we can see what's happening with these projects that we voted on in the trip bond. If we'd seen those, maybe that would, uh, change our opinion of what I T S was doing. Through Freedom of Information Act, I did, uh, get quite a few emails, um, regarding the East Loop, back when we were watching that project closely. And Techstart's highly involved in all of these projects. They are attending bi-weekly meetings and participating and emailing. And so the, uh, the point that I T S is the only one that knows Techstart standards on these projects, I think is, is a, is not a valid point. Techstart's certainly making sure that the design consultants the county has hired are following their expectations, meeting their standards, and they're driving these projects. The county hired experienced design teams to, to deliver these projects. And I think they're capable of doing it without I T S's oversight. Otherwise, the county wouldn't have hired them. So for those reasons, I don't think I T S's services are needed any longer. The county engineer previously stated about how she communicates with I T S multiple times a week and even multiple times a day. And in my opinion, as a consultant myself, I think that providing stellar services, you should be able to make day-to-day decisions without having to call the client multiple times a day to, to do those things. So I think I T S created for themselves a, a middleman position, and, uh, they're gonna milk it as long as they can. I'm confident in the M P O's ability to petition and position Brazos County's interests with Techstart and other agencies at least as well as I T S and at no cost to the county. I think I T S's time has passed. They served their purpose. They got the bond. They started the projects. But I think the county can carry it to the finish line. I urge you to not renew the contract today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierceall. Court now calls Jody Quimby. Mr. Quimby, welcome back. Please state your name and precinct you reside in.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, Jody Quimby, precinct two. I'm here to visit briefly about the I T S contract. And initially, I just wanna, I would like to have the air cleared with respect to who's designing the project. And I don't think it's I T S, okay? The county, any owner hires a designer to develop a project. If you hire the designer and you believe in that designer and you believe he's not a deceptive person, let's put it that way, you wouldn't have hired him if you thought he was deceptive or they were deceptive. So that's the person you need to be dealing with. To put someone in between the county and the designer is a ludicrous idea because there's nothing being accomplished. You have a project manager here and he's developing a team? Those are the people who represent you at a meeting, not somebody from somewhere else that's charging multiple other counties for doing the same thing. You have no idea whether he's riding on your dime or somebody else's, okay? So I would say, since I T S is a coordinator, I think that's correct, right? He's coordinating. That's what I hear repeated time and time again. He sends reports. I've even seen reports where he's approved a payout from your engineer, okay? Just like the engineer is not being truthful with you. He has, if he, engineers or an architect typically with an owner has the management of that, construction management of that project within their contract. So that's one layer. And you're putting I T S on top of that, and you got a project management team on top of that, and you got yourself, okay? So this is distancing your responsibility, uh, in a ridiculous way, I think. So I would say that, um, uh, it may be reasonable to extend I T S's contract to some degree if they're in the middle of something, which they're really not in the middle of anything other than attending meetings, okay? And, uh, writing reports. So this is additional layers that are not necessary. And, uh, with that said, there's not even any reason for I T S to have started to begin with. Like Commissioner Brown has said, Techstart's gonna do what Techstart's gonna do. And you've got a design team to work with them to get a project completed. You've got a project management team to oversee that on your part. You don't need I T S. So I suggest that you cancel this contract and don't go forward with it. With the caveat, if there's some little something that I'm not aware of, maybe he's, can continue for a little while, but, uh, if he's only coordinating and going to meetings and telling you, "Oh, well, we met with Techstart on Thursday and they did a good job," that's not accomplishing anything. So if that's the extent of his work, then he can go charge some other county for his work and not Brazos County, in my opinion. So please, uh, consider that and, uh, take action in the best interest of the county, not I T S. Thank you.
Mr. Quimby, thank you so much. The court now calls Kyle Greenwood. Mr. Greenwood, welcome. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Good morning, Judge and members of the court. Echo, sorry. Kyle Greenwood, precinct two. Thank you for giving me the time to speak this morning. Uh, as you all may remember, the last time the I T S contract was brought up for discussion, there was quite a bit of community opposition. We were in the midst of a contentious, scratch that, robust discussion with regards property rights, transparency, and stewardship of the county's resources. Many of the community members that came up raised issues about these items. In fact, we had just received a briefing from the vendor the week before that some of us would say was less than we had hoped for. These issues were substantial enough at that time to cause the members present to table the, the contract for further action. That said, many things have changed since that time, and I appreciate the actions the court has taken to address our concerns. We, as a community, I believe, see the, the wisdom in not relieving a commander in the midst of battle. And my concern would not be, my concern would be really more pertaining to the contractors who are involved and the disruption that this may cause them, as well as potential delays to the work and along with that, additional expense to the county, which would be a bad thing. My concern would be more for Binkley Barfield, R G Miller, and Lambstar that are doing those projects. And so for that reason, I would support the county's approach to a limited extension of this contract to allow the work to be completed and finish out the contract that those contractors have provided or have, have agreed to provide. That said, the only other thing I wanna, uh, mention is I appreciate the, uh, the carpentry that has been done to make this podium a more stable place from which to stand.
Removal of wills.
Yes. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. Greenwood, thank you for being here today. Court now calls John Book. Mr. Book, welcome. Please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. John Book, precinct two. And I wanna echo the words of other speakers this morning while also trying to harmonize both, uh, Commissioner Brown's comments as well as Commissioner Condola's comments. This is a tale of two halves. Aggies are aware this past Saturday of two different halves and a contract extension. What Brazos County had in this first half is equivalent. Y'all have the power right now to review this contract further than just to renew it. And what does the contract say? What does it require? Under scope of services. Task five. Community outreach education program. Task six. Monthly statement of deliverables. Task two, general program management and design assistance. All of these things and more haven't been met. They haven't got them over the finish line, over the, into the end zone. If, as described by the county judge this morning, it's January twenty-six, twenty-six, step down, November twenty-twenty-six, step down, January twenty-twenty-seven, step down, that needs to at least be, if not referenced. I don't know if that's from a legal contractual thing that makes it harder for the, uh, county to get out of it, but it needs to happen, at the very least in that way. Those monthly deliverables need to be understood in less than legalese, and it needs to be transparent to the public, to your constituents in each precinct, no matter what project. I wanna, um, just simply also kind of push back on some of the, the complaints is, you know, we can't dictate what Techstart is gonna do. I agree with that. And, um, speakers, they can't even control that. They can't control the weather, just as much as the rest of us can't. And so in that case, the, the concern that I deeply have and, and respecting the professional opinion of a county engineer is that they're perfectly doing a great job. Maybe for her, but as a member of the public, it doesn't pass the litmus test. The challenge we have as a county is transparency, is accountability, and of actually having deliverables before the renewal of a contract. It may step down now, and that is the most needed thing right now, is if they're not working on something, by all means, step it down. But this shouldn't go to next July. It should not. We need to have accountability, full stop. I, I have nothing against the work of I T S or its, uh, folks underneath because I trust our professionals. But trust requires verification. Trust, but verify. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Book, thank you so much. Commissioners, any further comments on agenda item number nineteen? I will say this, the step down that happens today is significant. You have our word that as we get through with the Forty-seven Twenty-One, Binkley Barfield in twenty-six, as well as the Harvey Road, South Highway Thirty, in November twenty-six, this will be adjusted very transparently. Mr. Went and I have been working on this contract and negotiations, and you have our word. But I completely understand that the transparency in printed up will make things clear as gin, and we will work to get that done after we step this contract down significantly today, which I think we all agree on. With that, Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side?
Aye.
By a vote of three to one, agenda item number twen- nineteen prevails. Moving to agenda item number twenty, approval of contract number twenty-six dash zero-four-seven with co-file for book preservation and archival, archival imaging services in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. This project is utilizing TX Mass, contract number TX Mass twenty-three dash nine-two-zero-zero-one.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion on agenda item number twenty? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? The ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-one, permission to advertise bid number twenty-six dash zero-five-nine, heavy equipment rental for multiple departments.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion on agenda item number twenty-one? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? The ayes have it. Agenda item number twenty-two, approval of fee agreement number twenty-six dash zero-six-seven, testing of evidence with Armstrong Forensic Laboratory Incorporated.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Moving to agenda item number twenty-three, approval of C I P number twenty-six dash five-three-zero, Brazos County Administrative Building Construction Materials Testing with Dudley Engineering for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move, uh, excuse me, move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Oh, Judge, when I saw this, when I, when I first saw this, when I first got this package and I looked at this and I thought, ching-a-linga.
We hadn't had one of those in a while.
No, we haven't. I, I thought, why hadn't, why wasn't this in our original contract with the, with, with the people that are doing the building? And then I thought, okay, they're gonna, they're gonna test materials. So, okay, here's a brick. Oh, it's a heavy brick. It's a, it's probably a good brick. That'll, that'll be a dollar and fifty cents. Give me the next brick. Is that what they're gonna do?
It's gone up a quarter since this morning.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But what really, really bothered me, I, I came in this morning and I called Charles and I said, "Charles, I wanna see the bid sheet." And I'm glad that Dudley Engineering, it's a local company, but I said, "I wanna see the bid sheet on these, on this project." And he said, "Well, we don't have to have a bid sheet. This is a five-year contract for this company. So we don't know if they're giving us a good price or a bad price. They can give us any price they want because during this five years, it's up to them. And whatever they say, then we're supposed to approve it." As a taxpayer, you ought to be really mad about this. As a county commissioner, I'm really ticked off because we don't know if it's a good price or a bad price. Said they're doing core samples on the, uh, on the sanctuary. That sanctuary- That sanctuary has not had a big, we used to seat twelve hundred people in there. This was, this was my church. And I don't think we've had a big seismic event that caused us to have to do core samples in the sanctuary. Charles, you may, you may disagree with me, I'm sure you do, but the thing that bothered me the most was the fact that this company and other companies like it can get a five-year contract and never have to bid out what they're doing. I called the city of, I called the city of Bryan and I said, do we have to do this? And the mayor, I mean, the city manager said, all you have to have is a registered engineer sign off on it. You don't have to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get it done. So we don't know if that's a good deal or not because they can set their own price and we can't negotiate with them.
Well, I'm going to say this, you know, I won't argue whether or not, whether we need the core sample, but as you talked about the usability of this facility, remember when we started getting ready for the renovation of this building, we found that it was not well-built and that the outside brick facade was not strapped. And so, because it was not built well, so you're making the assumption because you had twelve hundred people, that it, that we may not have had a structural problem. We come to find out that the, this building was not well-built and that the builders, whoever built it before, maybe skipped a few steps and the facade is not strapped. So now, we're now having to make that correction to the tune of, I think, over a million dollars or so. So, just because you had twelve hundred people doesn't mean that the building is well-built. Now, whether we need to do the core, the, the, what is the word? Whether or not we need to do the, the courts, whatever sample or whatever it is we're having to spend the money for is another question, but don't assume that structurally, that part of this building doesn't have some problems. Now, whether we should be doing the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar testing, again, I'll leave that up to Chuck, Charles, to just, to explain that to us, but there's no guarantee that this building is structurally sound because we're already having to spend a million dollars on a poorly built building.
But I'm not, I'm not arguing that point with you. What I'm arguing the point is, number one, why wasn't this, this in the contract of the original building work that's about to be started? And number two, why does this company have a five-year window of they can do, they can charge us whatever they want to on every project that we have going, and we don't have the opportunity to say, is that a good price or a bad price, or can we get some other people to bid on it? Those are my two big obstacles on this entire hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Charles, is that true? We don't have to, we don't, we don't have any say-so over how much they charge us?
I think, Mr. Went, we would love to hear from you now. Charles Went, Head of Purchasing, Department Head. Thank you for taking the time to come up.
It's my pleasure.
I like the tie. Looks good, Charles.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I was thinking of you when I picked it up this morning.
Thank you.
So, we competitively solicited professional services, including geotech and material testing in, I believe, twenty-twenty-two is the number for the original contract. And just like the other contracts and the workshop that we had last week, we allow for a window, a three-year window with two one-year extensions beyond that. So when we contract with the companies, including the geotech and material testing, we lock in those prices for that term of that contract. And so, because of the nature of this contract, the professional services, the engineering aspect of it, then we don't do a low-dollar bid on that because it's not just, hey, let's test this soil sample and see if it has a, or the components necessary to hold up whatever weight, and so we need to do these types of peers and all. That's a professional engineer has to make that recommendation, and so that's why we do that process. So we essentially have those prices locked in for the term of that contract, and I know we, we've had some discussions about what that term should be. And we will re, I looked it up actually this morning, and in twenty-twenty-seven is the next time that this will go out, that will be a completion of that potential five-year window for this contract. And so we will competitively solicit those again. So, this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, what project management does is they take the specifications for this building and they go to the geotech, material testing folks, and they say, hey, because all those specs call out, hey, we're gonna test the mortar, we're gonna test the, the different aspects of the soil underneath the foundation, it did hold up, all those people, and we're not aware of any material defects in the slab. The problem is, is that it was built for a single-story slope slab, and we're adding in additional weight components above and beyond that, right? So it's not just holding up that single slab, it's also going to be holding up peers and stuff like that for a second floor, and it's going to have additional walls and weight and requirement restrictions. And so we need to make sure for the safety of not only county employees, but the occupants, the public that are going to be using that. I may be saying this wrong, but we need to make sure that we're, that it, that everything that we're building is going to be safe and durable. And then, not only that, but we also test those components to make sure that what we, the architect and engineers specify on the front end of the project and the contractor, we have an excellent contractor, but occasionally they get materials in that may not quite meet those specifications. If we don't test that, we don't know.
Charles, I, I agree with you on everything you're saying.
Yes, sir.
My bone of contention is, in, in, in twenty-twenty-two, when you locked in this contract for these people, you said, whatever you charge us, we agree with it. We didn't know in twenty-twenty-two, did we know in twenty-twenty-two that we were going to do this big renovation on this building?
I don't, I didn't, I don't believe so.
So, so we don't know, we didn't know back then, in twenty-twenty-two, that we're going to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do materials testing. So that, that's one. And number two, I wondered why this wasn't in the original contract with the people that are fixing to redo the, the building.
And so we don't put it in the orig, in the design contract for these folks that designed this project because we want an independent third-party objective, uh, watching to make sure not only that the design team did what they need to do, but the contractor does what they need to do. And so, that's, uh, testing and balancing, um, commissioning, stuff like that is typically pulled outside of those contracts. Sometimes they're included on it, and that's the entity's choice. But it's like having the contractor design your home and then build it, and then at the end of the day, you have to walk into it and say, hey, I'm here to enjoy this nice home. Well, you will unless they took shortcuts along the way, on the design side or the construction side. And so this is our way of ensuring that the county citizens get the best for their tax dollars, and we get the most durability out of what projects that we construct. It's to, it's a verification that everybody did what they need to do and everything is done the way it was supposed to be.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with you. I just don't know if we got a good price.
The timeframe, I understand.
Because it started in twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, sir. And so, the other benefit, and I mentioned this before, and all you have to do is just tell me to hush and I'll quit, but we also, because of inflation and all, all of those prices that we have are twenty-twenty-two prices, they're not twenty-twenty-five, or when they're actually performed, a lot of them will be in twenty-twenty-six, or maybe it may roll into twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah, but how could you project in twenty-twenty-two what the price would be on this building? You couldn't, because you didn't know, because it wasn't even, it wasn't even a thought back in twenty-twenty-two that we're gonna take this building and
Right.
make some dramatic changes.
Got lucky.
What we, what we have though, Commissioner, is we have the individual tests that will be performed. We get their rate sheet, and it's a pretty extensive list of things, and the majority of those things we'll never use, right? But we do have those on a rate sheet, and so we know what the specified price for a specified test would be, so that if we do encounter something like that and we need to avail ourselves of that, then we have the right there committed for future use.
Well, I've been beating on you for months now that I hate these long-term contracts.
Yes, sir.
Not just on something like this, but on all different kind of things. We need to get away from that, and if it, and if, and if it, if it means that you need an extra staff member to do it, then let's do it, because we don't know if we're getting the best deal. And when we have five-year contracts and seven-year contracts, that's not good for the county. So, I'll quit, I'll quit on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioners, any questions for Charles? Charles, are there, Lana?
No.
Chat? Were there any federal, state, or municipal statutes that required us to do material testing?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, well, as far as
For the material testing?
Well, you heard what I, I called, I called the city manager in Bryan because I was told that Bryan required it. He said that is absolutely incorrect. He said, we, we do require the fact that we need to have a registered engineer to sign off on the project. I understand that.
Trevor Laza, Project, Project Management.
So the, the authority holding jurisdiction on the project for permitting and certificate of occupancy is the city of Bryan. Construction materials testing is required in the International Building Code, which the city of Bryan has adopted. It is required.
It is required, what I just said to you.
So the requirements are set by the structural engineer on the project. They are in the specifications like Charles mentioned, and it is our responsibility to meet those. They stamped it. It's their design.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean we have to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get there. That's the point I'm trying to make.
We don't know that until we do the testing. And you're saying have an engineer sign off on it. What reputable engineer would sign off on something where there may be, as, as, as Charles has talked about, we're, we're building a different building in terms of a single-story as opposed to a, a, a multi-story building where you've got to put in all of the infrastructure to support that. So the need, and, and it's different. And so, any engineer, whether you get an engineer to sign off on it, any reputable, reputable engineer, if he knows those are the codes, he or she will not want to sign, necessarily sign. Who would sign off on it? Where, just like we're talking about the strapping of this building now, because maybe we didn't have commissioning, we didn't have those, those preventative things in place now, so we're up for a million dollars. If we build a structure where the structure doesn't hold up, and we even potentially could have a loss of life, no engineer that would say, engineer X, John Doe, whatever it is, signed off on this, therefore, here we, now we have this catastrophic, potential catastrophic issue.
Sure. And I, it sounds like it's a more process-related, related issue than anything. And, and I will say, I don't know that anyone would accuse us of being fast to get anything done, but the other benefit that this does give us on our projects is, we have a, we have a window. If we had to bid this out, every project we did, we're already bidding out the design, we do the design, then we're building, then we would be bidding the testing as a whole nother time block. And those do take months. That's not something that we turn around in days. And so, to have these contracts to the benefit to go and get a proposal and be able to turn it around into work, there's a value to that, to the county.
I understand that, and, and, and I understand the fact that we do need to have a registered engineer to sign off on this thing. My whole point is, we're spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get it done, and we don't know if that's a good deal or not because we don't bid it out. We go in, we go in for a seven-year contract, and these guys can charge us whatever they want to over a period of seven years on every project that we, that we, that we give to them. So we don't know if we're giving a good price or not. That's, that's my bone of contention. I think, I, I think our, our citizens should be upset about that because that's a lot of money. And we did it across the street on one-on-one. They were over there doing the core samples on it because we had an earthquake or something, I guess, maybe a few years ago. So they had to do core samples where that, where the, where the first, what bank was it, you speak across the street? First Bank and Trust. We did core samples. We spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over there. So, that's where my problem is, the fact that it's a seven-year contract. Charge us whatever you want, we'll just lay down for you. So.
Trevor, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any further questions on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three? If I'm correct, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? A vote of three to one. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three prevails. Agenda Item Number Twenty-
Hold on, Judge. Can we jump back up real quickly to
Yes, ma'am.
Item Number Nineteen. I just want to clarify for the record. It sounded to me like you said motion prevails.
Correct.
But our sound is strange in the back today.
Yeah, that's a very bad word to use. Prevail and fail sound very similar.
Correct. So we have
Agenda Item Number Nineteen was adopted three to one. Agenda Item Twenty-Three was also adopted three to one.
Thank you.
It's a much better use of my vocabulary. Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed from Casey and Shannon Iverson for point zero zero eight acres of land to be used for the improvement of Straussland Road Site is located in Precinct One.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five. Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed for Hillary June Lynn for point zero zero, zero zero, excuse me, point zero zero eight acres of land to be used for the improvement of Straussland Road Site is located in Precinct One.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six. Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed from Glenn and Jacqueline Hulab for point zero zero four acres of land to be used for the improvement of Straussland Road Site is located in Precinct One.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussions? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Seven. Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed from Anita Livingston for point zero two two acres of land to be used for the improvement of Straussland Road Site is located in Precinct One.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
May I just say, high five to these folks for being willing to give up a portion of their land for the road improvement that will serve the greater good, because that doesn't always happen.
Duly noted. Eminent domain is not something we'd like to endeavor on. Commissioners, any further discussion on Agenda Item Number Twenty-two? Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven, excuse me. There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight. Request for Approval of the Final Plat of Aggie Acres Subdivision Lot Eight dash A and Lot Eight dash B, being a replat of Aggie Acres Lot Eight, one point five five four acres of Brazos County, Texas Site is located in Precinct One.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine. Consider and take action on the Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road bore at eleven-three-zero-one Dilly Shaw Tap Road to provide water services. Project will also install seven-hundred-and-eighty feet of four-inch water line within county maintained right-of-way. Site is located in Precinct Two.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Thirty. Tax Refund Applications for the Following.
Move for Approval A through K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion on Agenda Item Number Thirty? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Thirty-one. Commissioners, Court Minutes for the Following Dates.
Move for Approval A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Thirty-two, budget amendments.
Move for approval A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Thirty-three, personnel change of status.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number Thirty-four, payment of claims.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. We will jump over Agenda Item Number Thirty-five on Executive Sec, on Executive Session. Moving to Agenda Item Number Thirty-seven, acknowledgment of monthly report from county auditor for August twenty twenty-five. Agenda Item Number Thirty-eight, acknowledgment of the investment report for quarter ending of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda Item Number Thirty-nine, acknowledgment of monthly report submitted in November twenty twenty-five. Agenda Item Number Forty, acknowledgment of the budget planning calendar for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Agenda Item Number Forty-one, acknowledgment of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget to actuals by fund as of November tenth, twenty twenty-five. And acknowledgment of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six contingency budget to actuals by the fund as of November tenth, twenty twenty-five. At this time, Agenda Item Number Forty-two, the juvenile director's report on detention population. Linda, welcome back, we missed you last time.
Good morning. It seems like I haven't been here in a while. We have thirty-four kids in detention with twenty-six males and eight females, and twenty-six on electronic monitors. And I don't know if y'all want to hear more stats, because we only come-
It's your opportunity to tell us what you need to tell us what's going on in your department, and we're grateful for your attendance, and the more knowledge is better. As you heard, the, the citizens, transparency is job one.
Can I speak to that?
Commissioner Conner.
From, from our tour, Linda, you guys do so much to help these young people not go down the, the path they're going, to try to help them. So often, they're going home to the same situations that are huge lists of ingredients as to why they were with you in the first place. But in these reports, I would love to hear more about, I'd love for the public to hear more about what you and your team do to try to help these young people understand, hey-
Graduation rates? I mean, you had a graduation last week.
Right, right, we do. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, I just, you know, didn't know what more you would like to hear, since we've always just done it this way, but I would be happy to give you more information.
Yeah, it's not a critique, but yours is a wonderful story for the public to hear. The sheriff's office, I can say the same, but-
I appreciate it.
The, uh, I would love for, yeah, if, 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 I know, I don't want to put you on the spot today, but helping kids get GEDs, graduate, helping them understand, hey, I'm on a bad road. This is your wake-up call. This is where you change things. Y'all do, y'all have some great stories to tell. And if, when you come up as a new thing, it'd be great to hear for the public to get to hear some of those.
Certainly, I would love to provide that, thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown.
Linda, I'd, I'd like to know at some point how many of these kids are foster kids.
Okay, all right.
Because we just have, we just, unlimited potential. Have you heard of unlimited potential? They, uh, they just put together an agreement yesterday with Blend College. We can send these kids to Blend College if we get them, and get them on the right path, so.
Most, most of the kids we have right now are from sometimes single-parent homes. But, you know, we, we do have those with both parents in the home, and very, very cooperative, very, they're very much there and helping their kids, and, you know, but a lot of our kids come from single-parent homes who, you know, lack resources, and that's what we try to help them provide. And so, anyway, we, you know, we don't have a lot of kids. We have a few kids that are like adopted kids, and some of them even come from other countries. So, anyway, but you can just let me know what you'd like to hear, and I'll prepare it.
Thank you so much.
All right.
And I would note to what he said about Linda, uh, most foster kids, if they make it to graduation, they have an automatic access to getting into college. I know several kids who were adopted, uh, who were, because they had been foster kids, also had resources to get into college, and I know some, some really great success stories from that. So, at college access is a part of being a foster kid, if you're able to keep them on the straight and narrow, and they're academically successful enough to get into college.
The problem, the problem is, when these kids foster out, is that they're given all that they own, put in a paper bag, and they're just, they're out the door. And they don't know what to do. And that's, that's where this unlimited potential has a real opportunity, because they want to send these kids in a cohort to Blend College.
Right, okay.
Where they're accountable to each other.
And we have-
And only three percent of all foster kids, only three percent nationally, go to college. That's pitiful.
And there is a local program that tries to do, they tried to create a home, and I don't, I'm sorry to say, I don't have all the information, because they've really struggled in terms of resources and funding, and a place to house those kids who age out, uh, but give them a safe place to live, so that they're not on the streets. And I don't, I don't remember what has happened with that, but I know-
I'll tell you what's happened to it. They, they have built, Stahl Craft has built three houses, and each of them, they're five-bedroom. And they're going to take these kids that they foster out and get them in college.
Wonderful, okay, yeah.
Linda, I think we've given you a good direction, and we'd like to hear some of the good stories.
Yeah, and we, and we do have those kids that are graduating from high school and moving on to go to college.
That's wonderful.
And we support that and try to help them as much as possible to get ready for that.
Thank you.
Linda, thank you so much.
So, the agenda item might need to be changed on the future, which is-
Correct, we'll look into that. Commissioner Conner, thank you for that. Agenda Item Number Forty-three, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. It looks like we get Mr. Martinez, Paul, welcome.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Our jail population as of today sits at seven hundred and thirty-three, six hundred and twenty-six males, a hundred and seven females. We also want to make a few changes, and we'll get that also modified on the agenda, as far as just making just the sheriff's report in general. Uh, end of stats for the month of October. Males, six hundred and twenty-six, females, one hundred and eight, which gives us a total of seven hundred and twenty-six individuals that went in through the intake release division of the Brazos County Detention Center. For the enforcement division for the month of October, our patrol staff was dispatched to nine hundred and seventeen calls for service, with two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven calls that were self-initiated. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great day. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Forty-four, announcements of interest items and possible future agenda topics. We'll start on the left with Commissioner Watson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
That's all right.
I don't have anything.
I know there's a VFW, VFW forty-six ninety-two is having a gala this weekend. I think it's, I have it right, they're having a gala this weekend on the twenty-second, um, on twenty-eight eighteen. Oh, what is, no, it's Harvey Mitchell, isn't it?
I think all the same.
Anyway, sorry about that.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Very well done. Commissioner Conner.
Happy turkey.
We're, I just wanted to thank all those involved. Veterans Day passed last week, you, uh, around our community. It just struck me, even talking to a friend that doesn't live in this community, how much we value the sacrifice and service of folks. I'm just so proud of all the remembrances and all those that were taking place, all the events taking place. Bonfire remembrance will take place today. And then, um, also want to thank Sheriff Dickey. He hosted our Cub Scouts last night. We brought a bunch of boys into the sheriff's office, and they all came out with clean records, and, uh-
They, they were not in policy.
Although, although when one of the, when one of the deputies came out front and hit the red and blue right when the boys were walking up to the parking lot on their way out, that was awesome. Did scare them pretty good. I don't think they meant to scare them, but, but they did.
Well, you know which ones were guilty, or had a guilty conscience.
Mine still hasn't been found.
Uh, I will say this, I'm looking forward to Thursday. We will have our Brazos County Employee Thanksgiving Lunch at the Brazos Center. Look forward to being there to serve all of you all and spend some time with you. Thank you for all the hard work you put in, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody in here. Cindy, Kathy, good to see you. We'll have throat lozenges, uh, at the, in our offices, you couldn't talk this afternoon.
I'll need one of those.
It's good to see you. It is now eleven twenty-six, and the Brazos County Commissioners Court will convene in Executive Session. Oops, I probably need to tell you who needs to be in there.
Um, well, actually, on, on C, I did render a legal opinion that it would be detrimental to the county's position to deliberate that matter in, uh, contract, in open court. I'd ask the court to take a vote, and it be unanimous in order to go into Executive Session.
So, moved.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it, it is unanimous. And it is now eleven twenty-seven. Do I have a list to read? Let me, I'm sorry, I am going to find this list of who we all need, and I apologize. But did you have it? I have a new one. Thank you for your patience. Convene in Executive Session on Item Number A, Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-zero-four. We'll need Aubrey, Ed, Jennifer, and Rayana. On Item Number B, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, Aubrey, Ed, and Kimberly. And on Item Number C, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two-five, Aubrey, Ed, Bob, Trevor, and Marcy Turner. With that, it is eleven twenty-seven, we will convene, the Brazos County Commissioners Court will convene in Executive Session.
We did okay with that march of the day.
I think that's right.
There's a few.
Is that the thumbs up?
You get, you get.
It is twelve thirty-eight and the Brazos County Commissioner to Court is out of executive session. Moving to gen item thirty-six, consider possible action. There is no consider possible action on the executive.
I think that's right.
She's wet.
There's a funeral. Is that the thumbs up?
You get, you get.
It is twelve thirty-eight and the Brazos County Commissioner's Court is out of executive session. Moving to Gen item thirty-six, consider possible action. There is no consider possible action on the executive session at this time. Commissioners, any final comments on today's Commissioners' Court? There being none, at twelve thirty-nine, the Brazos County Commissioners' Court is now adjourned.